The Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session, a work session, and a regular meeting on Tuesday, January 22, 2019, at 4:25 PM, 5:30 PM, and at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers and City Managers Conference Room on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with the executive sessions. Executive Session A: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Executive Session B: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Executive Session C: Discussion pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding property struck off from to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions from a tax resale held on November 6, 2018. Executive Session D: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code on the matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Executive Session E: Consultation with Attorney pursuant to Section 551.0712 of the Texas Government Code on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter.
Move to go into executive?
Second.
Aye.
Letter A: Discussion regarding the Brownsville Code of Ethics. Letter B: Discussion regarding the Whistleblower Policy. Letter C: Short Term Rentals in Brownsville and Coastal Occupancy Taxes Fund Workshop. And Letter D: Discussion regarding projects based as observatories.
Okay, I'm here to address with the commission, the state of the Code of Ethics that has been entrusted to my office to bring up to date and/or to create, and I would like to state that in looking at different codes by other cities in the state, and looking at our very own Chapter 38 Ethics Code, it seems to me that our ethics code is not in vogue. It just needs some revamping. We need to bring it up to code and up to date, and I believe it's something that we can do. You know, I will be making a number of suggestions to the commission today. Our old code did have an expiration date. I think our code is here for a reason, and that is to make sure that we have transparency throughout every process. It's here for a reason, and one of the suggestions I'm going to make to the commission today is that the commission consider bringing life, breathing new life into Chapter 38. Let's bring it up to date. Let's eliminate that section which allows it to expire. I think it's there for a reason. I think one of the first proposals that I'm going to make, other than bringing it back, bringing life into it, is that we eliminate the section that calls for its expiration. I'm also working with a number of departments of the city to make sure that it, that Chapter 38 not only applies to public officials and elected officials, but also to our department heads and every single employee of the City of Brownsville. We're trying to implement language that will allow every board, every committee, every subcommittee to also be subject to Chapter 38. I think that's what the community expects, and that's what I'm here to propose to the commission. In regards to the whistleblower policy, which is the very next item, I'm proposing to the commission that, you know, we do have a whistleblower policy within the structure of our employee policy manual. I think ours is a good one. I think it's there, and it not only covers whistleblowing as provided by the government code, but it also allows for sexual harassment, it allows for other wrong acts, or for just, you know, mismanagement perhaps of city resources, or any other violation under our code, apologize, under our ordinances, and under our charter. I think our policy has complicated language within it, and at the end of the day, it is an employee manual that everyone, every single person employed by the City of Brownsville should be able to understand. My suggestion to the board is going to be just to simplify the language so that it has less art or legal meaning words, and we can have language that our everyday employee can understand. I think it's a good one. I think it's broader than the whistleblowing policy under the Texas Government Code. I'm going to ask the commission to consider keeping the one that we have in place, but allow us to reword and rephrase many things so that everyone can understand it. Also, there is a requirement that every employee receive this manual, and I think we should, we can probably do a better job to make sure we have our departments distribute it in a better manner, so that every employee can get one and understands exactly what can and cannot happen as an employee of the City of Brownsville, and if something bad does happen, who they can go to, who they can go and discuss items or issues that are in violation with our charter and our code, or any other state or federal law. That's the state of those two policies. Again, just to reiterate, the whistleblower policy, we do have one in place. It gives us the protection under the Texas Whistleblower Act, so we're not out there without cover. We do have this. Ours is a little wider. I think this is a good thing. We just need to simplify some of the language. So I'm, that's what I'm asking for the commission to consider, and allowing me to be able to do that. In regards to the Brownsville Code of Ethics, just to reiterate, I think we have a good Code of Ethics. Let's remove the part of the Code of Ethics that allows it to expire so that it is always there, giving us a transparency and confidence to our, your all constituents and the citizens of Brownsville, and I'm asking just to be able to bring it up today. If the commission is inclined to go in this route that I'm suggesting, I believe we're 90% there. I think we have working items sooner rather than later. If the commission would like to go in a different direction, we have other avenues that we can explore. This may take a little longer, but I think it also gets done. So at this stage, all that is required is for the city to decide which way it wants to go, and to decide what changes, if any, it wants to make to what we already have there, and what we could bring back to life.
I just want to make a suggestion that we start new with a new calendar year, that you give employees a written, their hard copy, that they sign for it, and then proceeding after that, as you renew, on a yearly basis, that they get a digital copy, and, but that they still be required within the department to be able to sign. Just so that we can stay up to date, and we can ensure that all employees have gotten it, just make sure that we have a signature page with everybody, just so that we can be, have everything on file.
And the only other thing I would add is that it be written in very common language for everyone, regardless of their educational level, to be able to understand. And should it be in Spanish as well? Because we do have some employees that are more comfortable in Spanish.
So we do have some that speaks, that prefer Spanish, and I will say that before my start, the beginning, progress, and we always distribute this as part of our onboarding process, so that won't change. I think the issue of how can we redistribute?
Continue to remind and share that information. It's a good practice.
Just to have, so that's not a major change, but.
Do you do that regularly in typical case?
Onboarding. So any new hot, we have.
Can you even promote and do that kind of thing, or transfer? That's another opportunity to share that manual again.
And if I may, Commissioner, the whistleblowing part of a manual is not very extensive. It's something that can be brought up to management and to the commission for approval, and if approved, I think we can dis- disseminate that as a leaflet or as a document, and wait until the rest of the manual gets up to, up to, up to code, so that we can put it in there. But it's something where we can start right away. And I don't know if there are any other questions in regards to the first two items.
Hi. Mayor Burroughs. Thank you. Good evening. I believe we have a presentation to show for the short rentals. So this is an overview of the short-term rentals that are available to the public here. We currently do not regulate them. Listed on the webs, on the, on the screen are the most popular websites that we use. I will stick to, the following presentation will only be about Airbnb because it tends to be the most popular one that the public uses. These are accounts for the City of Brownsville. These are short-term rentals. If you go to any website and you search for the City of Brownsville, these are the numbers that are going to come up. Of course, although even if you're selecting Brownsville itself, it's still going to include maybe locations. From Rancho Viejo, Isabel, South Padre. So this is a rough estimate. Is that the number of properties or the number of people that rent it? This is the number of properties that are available for rent. If it's the same owner, I wouldn't know. And of course, that's. Same property can be double listed in various sites. So like I said, the most popular site is Airbnb, and Airbnb states that. The City of Brownsville has over 1,100 guests that have reviewed them, or at least their state. A in Brownsville, and the average rating is 4.8 out of 5 stars, so people tend to be really happy when they come here. Next slide. This is a rough estimate of the locations of the short-term rentals throughout the city. The larger the dot, the higher the concentration of rentals in that area, the smaller the dot, there might be only one or two in that area. And this is only a section of the city. Next slide, please. And there are all kinds of rental types, apartments, lofts, guesthouses, private rooms, and entire homes. These are actually all properties that can be found here in Brownsville. Next slide. So Airbnb and the hotel occupancy tax. Airbnb charges a 3% service fee to rental property owners from each transaction, so that'll already be included when you check out, whenever you're actually renting something. On the website, they say that they will inform property owners if an occupancy tax-related feature becomes necessary for their listing, and they will automatically collect the local hotel occupancy tax on every transaction if required to do so, and it'll pay the city in a regular lump sum, but omitting any information from the property owners or, or the guests that are staying there. And historically, in larger cities, Airbnb guests tend to stay 2.4 times longer and spend 2.3 times more compared to typical tourists, and they tend to spend that money in the area in which they're staying. Next slide, please. This is just a weak comparison. All of the number, the figures that you're going to be seeing on this presentation are just to ensure that if at ever, at any point, the City of Brownsville decides to regulate, the money that's going to be coming back from them will cover any overhead costs. We want to tie everything here basically to life safety, so regulations and all of that. Next slide, please. So this is a, to get a general idea, we wanted to do the absolute minimum amount. So what is the minimum guest? One person. The minimum stay? Two nights. So this is just to get an idea that if we regulate them, we will be able to cover overhead costs, inspections, regulations, registration, all of those things. Next slide, please. So again, using that minimum amount, this is how we're getting these numbers. Next slide, please. So Airbnb is not going away. It is very popular, and I believe that if you go around town, there's a lot of beautiful places that tourists would love to come and stay in. One of the things that people do when they go somewhere, at least I can speak for myself, is that I want to go somewhere, I want to do as the locals do, I want to stay as they do, and not stay in a hotel. Next slide, please. So these are some facts about Airbnb and short-term rentals in general. So trends show a substantial growth of short-term rental use. The City of Capel, San Marcos, and Fredericksburg recently passed ordinances regulating short-term rentals. Airbnb growth isn't slowing down and will continue to grow in the future, as per studies done by AirDNA in USA Today. Modernized and historic short-term rentals are popular and in high demand. Investing in structures in order to appeal to future guests help maintain historical aesthetic and property values. Cities regulating short-term rentals have noted that concerns regarding parking, noise levels, and safety have been reported by neighbors and contributed to the regulation of short-term rentals. And the average number of people staying in Airbnb per night is 2 million, so about every night, 2 million people are staying in an Airbnb somewhere in the world, and over 5 million Airbnb listings exist worldwide. So for your consideration, are short-term rentals in need of regulation in Brownsville? Regulation means collection of hot funds, ensuring minimum safety standards through inspection. Insuring minimum safety standards through inspection, including but not limited to building and fire codes, permitting and registration process for property owners, and regulation would allow rental properties to be identified and provide a proper way to address concerns regarding short-term rentals. Perfect rentals would depend on compliance. So we really want to tie all of these things to life safety. We want to ensure that where people are coming in. That it is adequate, that they have the right things in there, and that of course, that the neighbors have a say in what's coming into their neighborhood, and that there is a proper process to go through the system in case people do have concerns. Thank you.
So Mayor Proctam and Commissioners, just to expand on what staff just provided, and by the way, staff was researching this before I got here. They just happened to use Capel because we've dealt with this in our community, so I have a little bit of background with this issue. Communities that have decided to take this step in terms of regulating short-term rentals have done so for different reasons. In Capel, for example, I can share that story. It was a quality of life issue. It was complaints, noise complaints, people coming in for a two, three-day stay, having overnight parties, leaving all the trash out, and people saying, "My values are going down, my quality of life is suffering." So in Capel, it wasn't for money-making purposes, it was for quality of life. That is what the constituency came to the commission with concerns on, and that's why the commission acted. So to give you some insight, you have three basic decisions when it comes to short-term rentals. This is a great example of change, external change that impacts communities, that has impacted the hospitality industry. You can choose to do nothing, you can choose to outright ban them, or you can choose to regulate them. And when you regulate them, you're really working within the realm of property rights, fair business, because they're competing with hotels and other industries, and they're not paying hot tax and things like that. You have the issue of quality of life for residents. So that's kind of the arena that you're in when you decide to take a step. I will tell you that what we determined is that there's, there are third-party services out there that provide monitoring services for Airbnb, because what happens is, a lot of the activity regarding STRs happens at night, it involves court enforcement, it involves PD. You don't expect to recover those costs. So while this is covering administrative overhead that relates to the planning department, you won't see it in terms of a cost recovery when you begin to incorporate court enforcement and PD and other services. So if you're going to do it, it's really to try to find the best balance of, again, regulating for quality of life, trying to recover some costs, but really to say, from a life safety standpoint even, that you want to be able to proactively address any issues related to short-term rentals that we may experience in our community. And I was actually taken aback a bit at our numbers when we began doing short-term rental regulation, we only had like 25, and at that point, we already had a lot of complaints. It appears that every 20, all the 25 homes had issues, but in our case, we have a lot more. We are a larger community. I can't say that staff can report that we've had a lot of issues within the community in terms of them coming to us with concerns regarding the service, but work session is for this purpose. So you give us direction. If you, if you have any inclination to want to do something about short-term rentals, these are the variety of reasons for why you would want to do something about how you manage them. So that's, that's my two cents.
Honorable Mayor Protem and Commissioners, good evening. So the next item before you is regarding Commissioner Tetrals, and I wanted to speak up on my background as a TCEQ former official, because some of the discussion centers around the landfill, and as you may know, the landfill is a regulated operation by TCEQ. So I wanted to discern to, the conversation that will be occurring here shortly, and discern to, there's two topics that you'll be hearing. One is about using the landfill as a viewing for launches in the near future. We did check with TCEQ, and as long as the cell is not currently active, and as long as there's nothing permanent placed, such as temporary bleachers and porta-potties on, on the landfill, and the event itself is temporary, it can be accomplished. The second item that you're going to hear is about potential conversation about an observatory, but I wanted to clarify that they're not mutually exclusive to one another. It's two items that just happen to have the same theme, which is regarding SpaceX and launches. But I wanted to clarify, because there was an article today, and if not read carefully, it would lead some people to believe that we would be building on top of landfill cell property, and that is not the case at this point. Now you, the floor two, Commissioner.
So I'm really excited to announce this, these plans today. As most of you know, about seven and a half years ago, the city commission at the time was approached with this prospect that this rocket company, who was so new, and they were getting ready to see if they, they would service the International Space Station, and their name was SpaceX, they came here to City Hall. An extremely amazing company who has been the first private company ever to service the International Space Station, showed up in Brownsville, Texas, ready to launch rockets, and, you know, I'll never forget the first time that we sat in front of them, and they laid all of their plans out for Boca Chica Beach. I think some of us just sat there with our mouths open and eyes blinking like, "What?" So after, everything was said and done, we went through so many environmental studies and all kinds of changing legislature to allow the beach to shut down while the rocket launched. We went, this, I can tell you that, me personally, it became my fight to bring this rocket to Brownsville because of all of the amazing opportunities that it would bring to our youth, to our university, to everybody. I mean, I wasn't alive during the time, but one of the most golden eras of the, the history of the United States was the time that the United States was launching to the moon. And so it's the golden era of the United States, and to know that in our backyard now, SpaceX not only selected us, but has brought this rocket to our backyard, Boca Chica Beach. And so when that happened, as most of you know, the city put in, through our incentive corporation, we heavily incentivized SpaceX to come to Brownsville, and about $5 million was put up. And one of the main reasons that we did it was because we understood the tourism boom that was going to come with it. And we know that people, I can tell you right now, people in Mexico have been reaching out and asking, "When is the rocket launching? When do we go? Where can I stay? What can we do?" We have people from all over. During the time that SpaceX was courting us as one of the four selected sites that they were looking at, I had the opportunity to go to Florida, Cape Canaveral, NASA. Some of you have only seen it on TV in I Dream of Jeannie, but it's a real place, and I was able to go to Mission Control there and watch a Falcon launch to the International Space Station, and I will never forget the two seconds after seeing the rocket lift off the floor, having tears in my eyes, knowing that that was coming to Brownsville, and the opportunity, and the excitement, and the magic that was behind it, and it being in our backyard. So I'll never forget walking away from that launch, just thinking, "How can we make an experience where every single child, every single family, every single person in Brownsville has access to that without having to pay, without having to travel, without having to pay for a hotel? And how can every single person in the state comfortably come to Brownsville, stay, leave their money, rent a nice hotel, watch the rocket launch, go out to eat afterwards, and create revenue for our community?" And so behind all of that started about a two-row scout for a location here in Brownsville. I know Cameron County has one, but I think it wouldn't be fair to the City of Brownsville to not look into a spot where we could have as our own. It doesn't mean there can only be one, there should be multiple to accommodate the thousands and thousands of people that are going to be coming to see this. And so we scouted all over, I can say that Mr. Lopez was very helpful in that, and we looked at Loop Farms, and unfortunately, it was behind the border wall, so we just, we couldn't get any safety or clearance with that. And we basically looked at a map of all of Brownsville, and we wanted something that was in the city limits, we wanted something where we weren't going to have to spend an arm and a leg, and we wanted something that would have a perfect, direct view of the rocket. And so then, we found that the city did own about 300 acres of open land that bordered the perimeter of the city, and that was at the landfill. And so although the landfill kind of has a strange connotation to it, because it's a place where we take our trash, it should be noted that when you visit it, it is, it's not what one would envision, you know, a dump, absolutely not. Every day, anything that's brought in is filled with several feet of dirt, and so the land is completely clear when you walk on it. It's as if nothing has ever happened there. It is the number one birding facility in all of South Texas. You might be surprised to know that there is a bird. Does anybody know what the bird is that comes once a year? And it was in a Jack Black movie? No? Some kind of crow, but there's a crow there. Anyways, so the first time I went, there was a flock of about 100 people, and I was baffled as to what they were all doing, standing there, but they were bird watching. So this is the number one site already in the RGV to watch birds. But with that, we found that there is a closed cell, so it's 120 feet, 110 feet up in the air. It's been closed for about 10 years now. So what that means is it's basically a field of dirt. It's not contaminated, TCEQ has already tested it, and it's 110 feet in the air. Just by ironic chance, it is the furthest out on the property that we own. I guess when it was started, people, when it was started 20 or 30 years ago, people never envisioned that that piece of property would overlook a rocket. And so it was built 110 feet high. When you're up on the, when you're up on the mound, the most incredible thing is, you can actually see the rocket. It shimmers in the sunlight, as if it was always meant to be there. And so once it starts launching, this 110-foot pile is actually the best view from anywhere that anybody could ever get when it takes off. So I, you know, came to the city and I asked, "Can we get permission? Is it allowed? Are there any contaminants? Is this possible?" And the answer was always, "Yes, yes, yes, you can do it, green light. We checked, as long as there are no permanent structures." The other, the other, the second side, as Mr. Dr. Rodriguez was explaining, is that we do own all of the surrounding area around it. So there are about 100 and something acres, right, next to it? 130 acres? There's 130 acres that surround it, and on that land, it's open, it's not an active cell, nothing has ever been dumped on it, it's not contaminated, it's a green space that was ultimately put aside to have a park or something, something in conjunction to, to, you know, balance out the land from having a landfill on it. So it was always open land. So one of the really. So one of the really cool things that we came up with on one of our trips out there was to possibly build, and this was after I took one of my trips to California to go see the rocket factory. My driver took me to Griffith Observatory in Los Angeles and I don't know if anybody's ever been there, but you definitely have to Google it. And if you're ever in California, you have to go to it. It is the most magical place that you could ever imagine. It sits atop the canyon of Los Angeles and it looks down. It has a panorama view of the entire city of Los Angeles. So you're going to have to forgive me because there is one misspelled word on this. So I'll only show it to you if you don't give us a hard time about it. City staff made this a few hours ago. And this is a rendition of what we are hoping to build or eventually plan for that area so that it can become a tourist destination. Once the rocket starts launching, we hear that it's going to start having some action within the next 60 days. So this is going to be groundbreaking for the city of Brownsville. And I want to make sure that every single family, every single, again, I'm just going to cover this so you all don't see the typo. I just want to make sure that every single child and every single family within the city of Brownsville has a front row seat that they can afford, that they don't have to pay for, that the community of Brownsville is the benefactor of all of the hard work and all of the opportunity that is coming with the starship and all of the other rockets that they have planned to launch from our beach. And so you all can take a close look at it later. And I just want to thank city staff and all of our management for putting as much work into this as they have. And I can't wait to see everybody out for the first launch and hop tests. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
The only thing I wanted to add to the conversation is we were asked earlier by
someone about methane because landfills generate methane. And I wanted to say that is a whole other discussion that we're having with landfill because we do have some plans on landfill that is independent of these conversations because landfills do generate methane. But in our conversations with TCQ, that was not one of the issues that was encountered in this specific cell.
Mayor Protemin, council members, this is a concept that began, the discussion began before my time. So the purpose of why it's before you today is for discussion. We at the staff level can proceed with the concept in full until we get direction from the commission. So that's what I understand is the purpose of the conversation. So I just want to make clear that we can certainly invest the time, energy, resources and attention to this project, which is a concept, if you guys so desire. So that is what's before you today as Commissioner Tetra has presented and the floor is open for discussion. So please, we're here for your direction.
I have a lot of questions. One is, does it smell of landfill?
No.
The portion of the cell number three, which is the specific cell to this event, is not near where the current cell is being used. So the trips that have not had the presence of smell. Keep in mind that every day the landfill is covered by dirt. So any potential smells are covered up as the dump trucks haul in the trash for the day. So I can't say if there is or there isn't smell, but my experience personally and my trips out there have not had that pungent smell that you usually, usually comes across with trash. Could it be there? Potentially, yes.
Can we do the question out there?
So the, there's a lot of property out there at this location. Really, it's an area that can be master planned. I know it is a landfill, but certainly there are cells that TCQ would not allow us. We could not form trails anywhere near any active cells. But any property that has never been in contact regarding landfill purpose potentially could be used as trails, so.
Would that be the same situation we have like that switch charts?
I didn't hear you.
Is that the same situation we have as the switch charts?
So the switch charts currently is going through a phase one environmental. And with any project that is done, it undergoes an environmental phase. It would be no different with any project moving forward. And the environmental phase is done exactly for that purpose to determine if there's any risk.
Where's the proposed location for this facility?
There is, I, there's no proposed location. It's more of a general area out in the east side facing the launch site. So it would face eastward surrounding that city property. Please keep in mind this is concept. Other than this rendering, no other work has been done at this time.
Yeah, we'll say that if staffs to devote significant, again, resources into doing more due diligence, I would say the big one I would, that stands out off the bat is the environmental piece. We have to clear that hurdle and I think Arx mentioned that we cannot build on top of the landfill. It may be cost prohibitive. And so looking at options, again, this is a, the start of anything of a due diligence stage. But we need direction from the commission so that we can take the time to do that, to give you options, to invest, again, energy resources. There's all these, I mean, you all have seen projects been done before. There's all these soft calls and feasibilities. And from my perspective, we'd be starting the feasibility process of this type of a concept out in that general vicinity. But we need to hear from the commission about what's your appetite for this concept so that we can work in confidence that yes, we can be investing staff resources and time and city resources on this project.
Any idea what it would use, be used for, but even to watch the launch a few times a year?
And just bouncing ideas off each other when we were out there, one of the things that we found was, one, it could be used as a birding center because there are tons of birds out there. And the other thing that it could be used for is just to observe meteor showers and all kinds of other events, lunar events, solar events, anything else that would be occurring. It does not have to be on the top of the cell. That just happens to be a good viewing area. Another thing to point out is that we don't have plans for anything to be built on the cell because there's nothing we can do permanently on the cell. But we do own all of the property around it that is away from the cell. So that's one of the important things to reiterate is that we already own the property. So I believe that it's worth looking into to see if we can develop it and divide it away from the other things going on there.
So here's thought, what we can do is generally if council wants to give direction is explore this further, do some due diligence, bring you back some options, you know, what's the rough magnitude of cost on this thing and where could it be located and that type of thing to help you make a more educated decision about whether or not you think there's merit behind this concept. But at least today, what we can get, what staff would benefit from the commission giving us direction on is what's your perspective on this so that we can at least bring more concrete details about this potentially becoming a project. But even that, we would need your direction on because we can't be dedicating resources on something that you don't feel is a concept that's worth exploring further that could eventually become a plan that we would work on. We could talk about funding later. That, this is obviously a capital project. You would tackle this as part of the CIP. You talk about financing. I don't know, there's even grants for this thing, but you would be talking about financing. That's next steps. But if you all want us to do more digging into this concept, that's generally what this is for tonight. Give us direction on what you think and what do you see when you see this concept happening as proposed.
I'm okay with you. We can do a lot more. I mean, we've done projects before, staff is able to see, but we want to make sure we're not, again, working on something that we don't have to be working on. But I see general support. I see some heads nodding. So this is not for vote. This is for discussion in advance. We can package this up, bring it back to you next time if we want to do more detail.
When you come back, I would like to see some beginner phase of this. In other words, not the Cadillac version, not the Cadillac version, but rather the, other version?
That could be more of a pilot to see how it's accepted and how it is, whether or not it's feasible before going to buy the most expensive car on the lot.
And just to reiterate, these plans are not anything that we have. It was just a concept to give people an idea of what could be on this property that we already own. Okay. Thanks.
Now, one other thing is, I don't know, maybe in your due diligence, you can talk to the board, I don't know specifically.
So Commissioner Tetra, I think one of the, first and foremost, what's out there? What's been done? Or you don't have to hit the wheel. But yes, we'll look at, we'll now be able to look at this a bit more in detail when we come back. We'll, we'll look at a variety of things, the way we would look on any other project to see how this
Briselda?
I took my pants on the 40 second.
Yoli, Yoli.
I left my key at my desk.
Mr. Bernard, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. Briselda?
Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing for the prayer. Tonight, we have Pastor Bill Moore from Living Way Family Church on 802 during the invocation.
Thank you, Brad. Well, let's pray together. Dear Father, we thank you tonight, Lord, for your wisdom, your guidance in every area, in every department of this city. Lord, we just called this city blessed. We thank you that it's growing. We thank you that we are achieving. We thank you that we're going to new levels and we are aspiring to do new things in 2019. Lord, bless this assembly, bless this council, all those that are involved in the leadership of this city in this new year. God, give them your wisdom, give them insight to new approaches. God, we just pray that for accelerated growth in our city, God, that nothing will hold the growth back. God, your blessing is over Brownsville and your desire is for this city to prosper. And we pray that it will continue. To do so, we pray for exceptional favor within its borders and boundaries. And we give you all the praise and all the honor for it. In Christ's name we pray. Amen and amen.
Next, we have action on items discussed in executive session. For action executive A, there was no action taken, but please let it be known that Commissioner Tetra was not at, in the executive session at this time during the meeting.
Due to a conflict of interest.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have action executive B, consideration and action on resolution number 2019-009 regarding Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, redesignation.
A move that we approve based on the discussions we had in executive session.
Second?
The discussions, including the edits?
Edits. Yes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I voted aye.
Item C.
Action on executive C, discussion and possible action on resolution numbers 2019-003 through resolution numbers 2019-007, approving or rejecting the bid offers received on the tax resale properties on November the 6th, 2018.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item D.
Action on executive D, there was no action.
E?
Action on executive E, there was no action. Next, we have the mayor's activity update. Since the mayor is not here, we'll go ahead and go to the commissioner's activity update, please.
So I'll start. The mayor is not here because he's at the mayor's conference. He sends his regards. Regarding my report, I have a couple of items. The challenge started on January the 11th. The 10th anniversary of the challenge has officially kicked off. Registration is about done and it is a pleasure to report close to 1,400 people registering. The energy and enthusiasm of the people to value beginning the year and getting on track to try healthy eating and active living is wonderful and continues to grow every year. Keep in mind that if you did not register, you can still participate in all the events. Thank you. And in all the events, check out the calendar at Facebook, at Facebook, at the Challenge RGV for these free events for the next four months. Again, a big thank you to the Department of, the City Health Department and the School of Public Health as well as Library Services for opening the libraries for registration and all, everyone else who participated in registration. Second, we did have the first ride with the commissioner January 12th. It was a wonderful time. Nearly 80 people joined me on a six-mile leisure ride ending at the Brownsville Farmers Market. Many thanks to the chamber for handling registration and promotion. The ride was an opportunity to enjoy our lovely city, but also an opportunity to thank some very special sponsors that made us, made it possible for us to fund a high-quality bicycle fleet and trailer to use for special events. This fleet, I'm very happy to say, also funded three handicap bicycles and in total, over $25,000 was raised, making these purchases possible without, without any city of Brownsville funds. To thank the sponsors, they would include Texas Southmost College, IVC, Noble Builders, Ambiotech, Rails to Trails Conservancy, the School of Public Health, Brownsville Wellness Coalition, the Brownsville Chamber of Commerce, Republic Services, Garver, the Brownsville Airport, Estrada Hinojosa, the Public Utilities Board, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, BCIC, Sombrero Festival, the Port of Brownsville and Line Barker. As you can see, if you go back to the first picture, these are pictures of the handicap bicycles that the city now owns. Next, keep going. These are the bicycles and the trailer behind it with all our sponsor logos proudly displayed. Senior, and then the next item I have is the senior event. Coming up, the Aging Healthy RGV Second Annual Summit, January 31st and February 1st at the Event Center from 9:00 to 3:00. Vendors and exhibitors with senior community resources on Thursday and educational summit on Friday with important topics for seniors, educators, caregivers and the public. And finally, I want to call your attention to an article in yesterday's paper titled "The Labor of Love." Maria Elena Salazar, a retired teacher, and her daughter Melba Salazar Lucio, a TSE English professor, are making pillows for children and people waiting their... professor, are making pillows for children and people waiting their turn for permission to seek asylum. They have made over 2,000 pillows, and their work has been very rewarding. I will be going into my cabinets and pulling out extra fabric and thread to donate to this humanitarian project, and I invite others in Brownsville to do the same. You can reach out to me at my City of Brownsville web email so that I can direct you to Professor Salazar Lucio's phone number so that you can contact her for these donations. And I know that's a lot that I said tonight. I apologize for the length, but they're all great stuff. So, anyone else have a report. Okay.
Next, we'll go to the City Manager's Update.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, just a few updates. First, we have a partial road closure on Billy Mitchell Boulevard. That began today. The access to the airport will be available through Les Malden Road. So, we do encourage drivers, those that are watching us online, and we do have a press release out there that was put out on our social media, to please plan ahead and also allow some time for additional travel because of this construction. We also want to commend our Planning and Development Services Department. You may have read the article last week that we have been nominated for the Central Brownsville Historic District as part of the Texas Historical Commission. So, this is still something that we may or may not receive. However, just the effort that it's taken to this point is a big thing. As y'all know, downtown is hot, is, is, is on fire, and we're seeing lots of investment. So, any additional designation of this sort is helpful because there are some tax credits that are, that are associated with this designation. So, it would further help any investors that are making improvements to facilities see some of that recovered if we get this designation. So, it's a big deal. Hopefully, we get the designation. The final one is, we have posted on our website, the municipal election information. There's a link on there that says Vote Municipal Election 2019. Our website is www.cob.us. So, we do encourage our residents to get information on where they can vote and, and learn more about the election in general by going to that link. It should be somewhere toward the bottom center of the homepage. That's all I have.
Mayor Protem, may I add two points to that? Mr. Bernal, as we've spoken the past, two thoughts along those lines. One is, as the light synchronization, a lot of that today, Alton Gloria Mpariz was out for a while. So, I mean, that was just a mess, and if we could really do something about that and those, and now, speaking about tax credits, I still think we need to do some more organization or streamlining the opening of a business process, because I, still, a lot of people have complaints with the permitting process. And I know that you and Mr. Lopez have done a lot for the community, but I still think we need to do some more things, because it's still very slow. People are still complaining, and it's still very difficult to open a business. So, I mean, with that same line of thought, if we want to attract more business downtown, we have to make it easier for them to actually open up.
Yeah, those are two items you'll see some discussion on very soon. In fact, we're looking at quantifying or re-quantifying the traffic synchronization cost. Y'all may recall, I sent an email about some monies that may come in. It's a one-time source. That would be an avenue for doing some work toward traffic synchronization. We could tackle that as part of the 2019 budget process, or even as part of a budget amendment here in March at the mid-year point. And, and on the permitting side, on my interviews with the community stakeholders, that's come up on a recurring basis. So, when I get that final 100-day plan synopsis to you guys, you'll see that that's one of those things that, that I heard a lot of and that we'll be spending time on. I'll just, I'll just leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Noah. Thank you.
Next, we have the Presentations, the Grants Annual Report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem and City Commissioners. We are here tonight to present to you our 2019 Grants Division Work Plan and also highlights and awards for fiscal year 2018. Here with me tonight is Nayeli Trejo. She is our Grant Analyst, and together, we will be providing with you the annual update on our progress, along with the City of Brownsville. On the slide, we have listed our mission statement. We have our mission statement aligned with the city's mission statement and core values, and so we have that presented there. And the next slide is for reference for our audience. It, our two divisions that are under our department, we have the Community Development Division and the Grants Division. And within our Community Development Division, we oversee HUD funds on an annual basis. In the last approved plan, we have several projects that include social services, rapid rehousing, also CDBG capital projects such as road improvements and drainage improvements, also housing assistance as well. Within the Grants Division, we focus on identifying, securing, and managing grant funding from a variety of resources, including federal, state, local, foundation, and other private opportunities. We work with our city's leadership, city departments, who are the specific subject matter experts, the nonprofits, organizations, and other partners to secure funding. So, they are all instrumental in this process. On this slide, you will see it's our 2019 Grants Work Plan. The following slide displays the work plan, and throughout each quarter, the Grants Division aligns its efforts to pursue funding by applying grant opportunities that target a variety of sectors that are identified as top priorities by our citizens. The sectors are listed on the slide. The work plan is divided by quarters to allow for variability in grant opportunities or deadlines. So, to date, the first quarter of 2019, which we're still in the first month, the Grants Division had already submitted grant opportunities that will serve as streets, drainage, infrastructure, and parks and recreation. The Grants Work Plan outlines the year's efforts, but it can be subject to change depending on the immediate needs of the city or community. Within this slide is the grants submitted for 2017, 2018, and using the same sectors outlined in the Grants Work Plan, we have created charts that showcase the percentage of grants submitted and awarded by fiscal year. This graph shows that between October through September 2018, grants were submitted to address all sectors of the work plan. Public safety was the highest represented sector. For the grants awarded, this chart highlights the sectors that benefited from grants awarded within the same timeframe. Please note that this does not include formula grants. Numerous sectors benefited from an award during this timeframe, and again, public safety was the highest represented sector. A total of 20 grant applications were awarded during this timeframe. The City of Brownsville received a grant award total of more than $2.6 million in grant funding and technical assistance. Notable grants awards range from body armor for the police department to funding for a fire training station. Now, I invite Nayeli to the podium. She will be highlighting some of the awarded grants. Thank you, Marina. On this slide, we have a few of our public safety awarded grants. Last year, the City of Brownsville applied and received several public safety grants. We received $114,000 from the Homeland Security Program to fund several public safety measures. This included an E-10 bomb disposal suit, helmet, and explosive detection monitor to assist in the detection and disposal of terroristic explosives for the Brownsville Police Department. Under this program, the Brownsville Fire Department also received funding for 10 vapor protective Ensembla suits and five portable radios. These items will help our public safety officers better protect our region in a safe and effective manner. Next, the city also received the K-9 heat alarm. The Brownsville Police Department received an award to outfit K-9 officers that would alert the unit to possible heat injuries or death. Additionally, the Brownsville Fire Department received funding from BCIC's capital grant for an upgrade to their cross-training facility, which included a new drill tower and liquid petroleum gas piping. This fire station also acts as the training hub for the Brownsville and Cameron County Fire Departments. Next, we have the Brownsville-Tulsa Fresnos Connect. The Brownsville MPO awarded the city $1.2 million through their transportation alternative programs, a program specifically for non, non-road alternative transportation. The approved project will connect Brownsville-Tulsa Fresnos and further support the Lower Rio Grande Valley's active plan. This will extend the current 8.5-mile historic battlefield trail and connect it to a 1.5-mile hike and bike trail in Tulsa Fresnos. This is the first off-street alternative transportation route in Cameron County to connect both communities. Now, we have the West Brownsville Little League. Through BCIC's capital grant, the city was awarded $300,000 for different physical and aesthetic improvements to the West Brownsville Little League Park. These improvements will allow them to increase the number of participating children by 325 players. In previously, in previous years, the Little League has had to turn at least 150 children away. Also, this is the first baseball park in the Rio Grande Valley to build an ADA-accessible Miracle T-Ball Field that will accommodate children with special needs. Thank you. Now, I'm going to hand it back to Marina to further update you on our submitted grants. Thank you, Nayeli. So, on this slide, we have the submitted grants. Some of the examples were highlighted by Nayeli. Others include transportation and also public health grants. On the next slide, we have highlighted our upcoming grants. One of it's the Texas Water Development Board. It's, it's actually a loan, so it's a funding opportunity that's very competitive. It's a low interest rate, and that's to secure funding to improve stormwater management infrastructure. The next one is Healthy Food Financing Initiative, to increase access to healthy foods in underserved areas and to revitalize low-income communities. And the following one is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineering, to secure funds and TA for stormwater management and drainage improvements. And then, the first two that are listed have already been submitted, the City Parks Alliance and MPO funding for MTP for several roadway improvements. So, the Office of Grant Management and Community Development offers several resources to the community, and that includes peer review and technical assistance to local nonprofit agencies. Our office also conducts on an annual basis a grants workshop to provide grants training to nonprofits and organizations in our community. The Grants Division also assists community development in promoting community voice by engaging and gathering public input. On this slide, we have our contact information. If you would like additional information, or if you have any questions or assistance, we're always there available to assist. And we would like to thank you always for your support and guidance. And if you have any questions, we're glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marina.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Airport Quarterly Report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem and Commissioners. So, we've, haven't done an actual update for a while. This will cover a lot of information really quick, but I'm not going to keep you here all night. Anyway, let's go ahead and get started. So, we're going to go over it in this order really quick, and then we'll spend as much time as we can on the terminal. And I'm not going into great detail in case there's questions that you have that are specific that I couldn't think of. So, the first thing we'll cover is the facilities at the airport that we've been working on over the past year. We'll cover the maintenance of the airport, which is ongoing, air service, marketing. We're going to touch on the federal shutdown, and then the new terminal. So, the facilities, in the, in the past year, we've actually constructed a new cargo building 20,000 square feet. Total project cost was 1.7 million, and it was funded by the EDA at a level of $1 million. And then, of course, a beacon, which is a visual aid to navigation, it's a navigational aid at the airport, that was moved from a light pollution area to the middle of the airfield where you can actually see it. It does some good. It was about $80,000, and it was funded at a level of $56,000 from the FAA. And then, these are pictures of the cargo facility. So, we have an interior view and then two elevation views, one from the ramp and then one from the street side. And you can see a bike rack there on the street side view. The photo, the top photo on the right has a bike rack as well. And then, we also have the rotating beacon. So, this is a canter levered design, is easier to maintain, more efficient to operate, and that's the beacon. In the maintenance of the airfield, one of the big maintenance projects we've just recently completed is a runway rehab and seal coat. This is a, they did 32, 32,000 linear feet of cracked seal, put on rejuvenating seal coat, and repaint, we're repainting all the markings. It was a $486,000 project funded at $440,000 by the FAA. And then, this is the new look of the runway. So, much, it's a much better runway, easier to see, and it's also going to extend the life of the runway. So, on air service, this is just a graph that shows the steadily increasing demand that the airport's seen over the past 15 years, almost 80%. And this is actually, we wanted to compare this to the other valley airports. You actually see a decline in the other two cities of Harlingen and McAllen, and this is over a 15-year trend line. So, we're trending up, the other two airports are trending down. So, this is another reason why we need both air service as well as new terminal. The air service, we announced back in May that we had Chicago service. It started with Saturday only and, and from November 3rd to April 6th. With negotiations and with seeing the bookings of the flights, the airline increased it to Sunday service added for December through April in totality. And then, they also added Tuesday and Wednesday frequency just for the March spring break season. And then, they extended the end of it from the first week of April to the end of April. So, we're really, we're really seeing an impact from the air service. We're seeing an increase to it. Then, they also added November, in November, they added Denver direct flight. So, through, for March of 2019, we'll see direct flights to Denver. Part of the air service is marketing. These are the campaigns that are ongoing. We have digital ads and some radio spots and things like that. Most of this is all in those cities. It's not here in Brownsville. We're marketing there to get them to come here, as opposed to the other way around. So, we're spending a lot of money in that marketing effort. But, on the note of air service and marketing, we're trying to nurture some marketing partnerships. So, we have, last year, 2018, fiscal year 18, we got a $15,000 commitment from the island. So, they're partnering with us in marketing for the air service, as well as the hotels on the island contributing $25,000. This year, we've already negotiated with them, and we've got a commitment for $30,000 for this fiscal year. In addition to that, we're trying to partner with McAllen. They're an hour and a half away from us, so we don't really compete directly with them. So, we do have in-kind marketing efforts. And what that does, it gives us the ability to swap marketing assets. So, we're extending our marketing reach, and the first campaign is, is this. It's not quite as fancy and glitzy as our previous campaigns, but this is something we're working with the, the other airport on. So, it'll change, it'll improve. We're getting 11 digital billboards in exchange for the three vinyl billboards that we, that we have here. So, this is a very good marketing exchange that we're doing in conjunction with McAllen, and it should help us, help both airports recapture some lost market to other airports. So, the government shutdown, we have about 15 employees per shift with TSA. They process between 250 and 400 passengers a day at the airport. They're all operating with no pay. That also goes for the Customs and Border Protection Officers at the airport, we, which we have about two at any given time at the airport. What we've been doing is providing, the city is, is trying to give them, point them to the assistance, the assistant programs, programs that are out there. So, there's a bunch of banks that are providing low or no-interest loans for 90, 90 days or, or until the government is funded. There's also, what we, we've partnered with the Chamber of Commerce as well to try to tap into their membership and get some donations for all the people that are impacted by this. So, we've been pretty effective with that, with meals. So, we're providing breakfast and lunch every day. And so, this is an image of, of some of the events that they've already had, and then we're going to continue that and continue to give them support.
I don't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
But, I had one of the agents that you fed reach out to me, and she was, well, they were, it could have been a he, too. They were very extremely grateful, almost moved to tears, that you had done that for them, and I just want to thank you for representing the City of Brownsville in that way, because it means so much to people who have no control beyond their circumstance.
Right.
And it just really moved me that you did that for them. Thank you.
Well, our city manager said it was the right thing to do, so. Then, we move on to the airport terminal. This is where I think everybody's interest is for tonight. We have the current terminal, everybody's aware of it. We've got two jet bridges, 37,000 square feet, and it's a maintenance hog. It's not built with economy or efficiency in mind at all. The new terminal, this is a rendering from street level, 91,000 square feet building. 20,000 of that, though, is a federal inspection station. We'll have four boarding bridges, and it's built naturally to be We'll have four boarding bridges, and it's built naturally to be efficient and, and modern. It's also built in a modular fashion so that if it does need, if we exceed our forecast, it's built for a 20-year forecast. So we can handle any aircraft. If we exceed our forecast with traffic, we can expand it with the same design and engineering, and it'll just be a larger building. These are some of the interior views of the facility. And I know everybody's wondering where we are right now. So just to hit the milestones here, we've actually went from conceptual design in 2017 through the design studies, the commission approval of design, as well as several F A A grant awards. Starting in September 2017, where we had 12.7 million. In August of, of 2018, we got an additional 2.3 million. And then just a month later in September, we got 8 million. And then along the way, we've done everything from issued the documents, bid documents, to awarded the construction contract. And we signed the contract in October, and then they got busy working. So we'll move along. This is our construction schedule. You can see, it starts in January where we are. So the little, really hard-to-read letters at the top there start, it's the calendar. So it's January through December of 2020. We're already in several different areas here. Mostly the road work, the parking work, and starting on the foundation. We'll have some images and stuff that you'll see in a second, but you can see that the Levi's and, the Levi's entrance road and the terminal bypass, that's what they're into right now. I don't know, I would estimate about a 50% completion. If we look at the overall project status, we can see that the design is at 100%. The permitting's about 95%. We're still working with the permitting office to finalize that. There's a few issues. The bid documents were out. That's at 100%. Bidding process is complete, and the analysis is done, and it was awarded. And we're, we're saying we're about at 1%, and that's based on the funding level and the invoices we've already started to pay on a 670-day contract. So this is supposed to be wrapped up in fourth quarter 2020. So that puts us at about 66% complete for the entire project. So a lot of work went into this before the actual construction. That's the whole presentation, and then we're going to do a real quick video that we put together. So don't mind. Basically, we're going to see two versions. We'll see an initial site view, and then it moves into, and then you'll see the changes. That's about it. We, I'd like to point out, we have salvaged about and relocated about 50 trees so far, a little over 50. And we're still daily moving more. We can only move so fast. They're, they're trees. They're slow. So any questions? No questions.
Excellent, excellent work. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We'll be, we'll be giving you project updates quarterly on just the terminal. So if you have any questions or anything else, feel free, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five.
Next, we have Keep Brownsville Beautiful.
Do we have a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, there's one more from my dad. Go right ahead.
I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor Protim and members of the City Commission. My name is Ava Garcia. I work for the Parks and Recreation Department. And I have the pleasure today of introducing a few of the Keep Brownsville Beautiful Youth Advisory Board. And they're here today to talk about the work that they've been doing over the past couple of years. I don't think that they've ever presented to the City Commission before. So I will let them tell, talk about their own work and introduce them. This is the chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Aslan Guerrero, and I'm the president of the Keep Brownsville Beautiful Youth Advisory Board, and these are my fellow officers.
Hi, my name is Cassandra Muyo, and I'm project coordinator.
Good evening. My name is Estrella Huerta, and I'm also project coordinator.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carla Vera, and I'm also project coordinator.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stephanie Thompson, and I'm the treasurer.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Madalisa, and I'm a project coordinator.
So I have a genuine question. What is the greatest gift we can possibly give? As human beings, it is taking actions that will ensure that we live this world better than how we found it. It is essential that we nurture, nourish a deep appreciation of the limited time we have in this earth, and that we profusely pay forward that sense of happiness, one act of kindness at a time. These actions are taken upon by all our Keep Brownsville Beautiful Youth Advisory Board members, whose hearts are not measuring size, but by the depth of commitment to make a difference in the lives of others. With Keep Brownsville Beautiful, the difference we are making in our community is evident. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to stand before you. We are pleased, honored, and humble to explain the origins and factors that have contributed to shaping our organization to what it is today. If you're not, if you're not already aware, Keep Brownsville Beautiful is an affiliate of Keep Texas Beautiful and Keep America Beautiful, a state and national organization dedicated to empowering communities to take initiative and keep their communities clean and beautiful. As Keep Brownsville Beautiful, organization's mission is to educate and encourage individuals to take responsibility for the environmental health of our community.
And we lead by example. Our vision is to make Brownsville the cleanest and most beautiful city in not only the valley, but the entire state. K B B Youth Advisory Board is comprised of student-servant leaders that bring a valuable youth perspective to programs and events hosted by K B B. Established in 2012, the K B B Youth Advisory Board has grown from an initial eight founding members from the University of Texas at Brownsville to a current 90 members representing 14 learning institutions. K B B has received an average of 352 applications since 2015 to be considered to become youth board members. With success comes growth, and K B B continues to develop each year. In 2017, K B B volunteer chapters were implemented in three high schools. These chapters offer members the opportunity of civic engagement, community development opportunities, along with the invitation to accumulate an extensive amount of community service hours. Since the commencement of the Youth Advisory Board, we have seen an exponential growth in clubs that require community service hours. Over the course of the past two years, K B B has been used as a model for the establishment of seven different Youth Advisory Board organizations, paving the way for future leaders.
The Christmas Tree Recycling Event is our recycling campaign and helps us introduce recycling to homes and families in a new and fun way. Trees collected have served multiple purposes such as mulch for beautification projects, brush cover for fingerlings, and newly installed ponds, and is important for reinforcement for sand dunes along our golf course beaches, all while preventing illegal dumping and saving landfill space.
During the Sombrero Fest, during the days of Sombrero Fest, K B B assigns a litter patrol throughout Sombrero Fest and hosts recycling activities for the whole family to enjoy. In 2017, K B B made over 200 piñatas out of recycled toilet papers and recycled tissue paper.
The Great American Cleanup is a class to action, which is to engage more volunteers and participants in public space cleanups and beautifications. In 2018, the Great American Cleanup included a graffiti abatement, two gardens, two resaca cleanups, a beach cleanup, along with a street cleanup that summed up to 55 miles.
Resaca cleanups are a citywide community effort held at various, various resacas within our community. They are designed to beautify, bring, bring hope to the community, and educate them on the importance of preserving and appreciating the values of resacas.
Beach cleanups are one of our most popular community cleanup efforts. Held at Boca Chica Beach, these cleanup efforts are part of a global environmental management system, important for educational profit, process, and valuable for all audiences. The overall aim is to provide a hands-on experience of just how litter, litter affects the ecosystem and the roles we play or should play to preserve it.
Every year, K B B helps organize an event called Haunted Trails. We set up Halloween-themed games and activities mostly made from recycled material, and the trails are filled with scares by our K B B volunteers, along with litter patrol that encourages a litter prevention throughout the event. Up to 70% of the props are made from recycled material, and 50% of the costumes are made from unwanted clothing.
The Brownsville Recycle Event, okay, Brownsville Recycle Day Event is a day of education and promotion of Brownsville recycling events within the community. The audience will learn the who, what, where, and how they could reduce, reuse, and recycle through workshops, presentations, and fun activities.
Keep Brownsville Beautiful schedules one community events where residents participate in concealing all graffiti throughout our community in an effort to make Brownsville a beautiful place to live.
Keep Brownsville Beautiful not only focuses on litter prevention and waste minimization, but also on beautification. Our beautifications consist of butterfly gardens and landscaping projects. In November, K B B installed over six 1,500-square-foot butterfly gardens along the historic battlefield trails.
Aside from our annual events, Keep Brownsville Beautiful co-hosts several partnerships with city entities such as Park at the Darkwood Sports Park and assisting in beautification at the Brownsville Golf Center. Keep Brownsville Beautiful adds support during neighboring affiliates, whether it is by participating in an Earth Day Fest hosted by Keep Mercedes Beautiful or joining a beach cleanup effort hosted by Keep South Padre Island Beautiful. Also, K B B has been invited to collaborate with other organizations, for example, a cleanup at Bahia Grande we participated in with Texas Parks and Wildlife. One of our proudest accomplishments has been the restoration of the turtle exhibit at Gladys Porter Zoo, receiving an acknowledgement for our contribution. In addition to our partnerships, K B B has also looks forward to working with other local and state environmental organizations and nonprofits. We have attended the Valley Environmental Coalition Summit for the past three years, aided in the adopted beach cleanups hosted by Texas General Land Office, Office since 2012, and we have helped in the Brownsville Animal Regulation and Care Center on many occasions. Many learning institutions have reached out for our help in the community service projects. We frequently team up with these schools to provide them with environmental projects like beautifications, restorations, and cleanups, such as the Montezuma Cypress Preservation with South Texas I S D, or the Big Event with Brownsville I S D. Furthermore, K B B also receives additional support and sponsorships from local businesses, including Denny's and Mr. Gaddy's, offering food donations for volunteers at our events, and Home Depot and Lowe's donating materials and supplies to our organization.
Over the course of seven years, Keep Brownsville Beautiful has hosted 259 events, consisting of 21,754 volunteers dedicating 122,754 hours of community service, collecting 407,640 pounds of litter and 579,980 pounds of recycling, recycled material, totaling in $3 million, $18,520, with 86 cents worth of volunteer time. Additionally, cleanups have stretched over 540 miles of Texas highways, waterways, and bike trails. Despite having had the events from seven years ago, the number of volunteers continues to increase, and our Youth Advisory Board hours have topped volunteer hours for the past two years. Every great organization requires feedback from the community, which is why we opened up a survey for the public to evaluate us on our performance. In the two weeks that it was open, we received 229 survey, survey entries that were essential in guidance as we move forward to our 2019 term. For our survey results, one that stood out was that 77% of the surveyors were aware of our organization's mission. Another great observation was that although 49% of our surveyors only attended one to five events a year, 32% have attended 15 to 20 or more events a year. Lastly, 87% of the surveyors responded that volunteering at our events has contributed to their quality of life. Furthermore, 97% said that they learned about the events by word of mouth. Is, it is, as a teenager, it is refreshing and inspiring to see that many of my peers are contributing to our community by volunteering. Due to our feedback, we have strategically chosen our events for the 2019 calendar.
I would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to stand here before you and listening to us. I was at the age of 13 when my life was going to be completely altered, and I didn't even know it. It was the year 2015 when I applied to K B B, just freshly out of middle school, a great year. I was young and an amateur, and I didn't know where or how. All I knew was that I had this art and passion to want to make a difference in the world, in my community. These past four years, I've had the privilege to see how K B B has grown, from 20 board members to 90 strong board members. But not only that, I have come to meet a young group of individuals that have given me hope for our future, because I now know that we are in good hands. Our K B B members are a group that are willing to wake up at 6:00 a.m. on a Saturday morning, ready for a beach cleanup, a resaca cleanup, a meeting, or inventory at the office, when they could have chosen to sleep in, just like the rest of their friends. Countless events, and each one starts at the crack of dawn, by a message, "Where are my peeps?", by our director, Eli De Leon. Through these events, I can testify how dedicated, committed, and passionate they all are. Our Youth Advisory Board represents 14 institutions in this city. We are all different. We are all unique. And the thing that I like the most about, is that we all have in common, is the love and fire towards being a volunteer and having a heart for giving back. I love, a love that guides us and pushes us to make a difference in our city. I have seen them. It isn't about hours on the resume. It is more than that. Through the board, we became a family that supports one another. I have seen them, and I had the privilege to this year be their president. And like I said previously, their hearts are truly measured by the depth of commitment to make a difference in the lives of others. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your great work.
Ladies, congratulations. You're to be commended on all, all your work. Thank you to you and your parents, especially Eli. Thank you so much. And to these children's parents for the support in driving them out, in taking them out, in getting them out there. And you can clearly see what our future holds, and if this is what our future leaders are, look like, I think we have a very bright future in our city of Brownsville. Congratulations.
And I just.
Congratulations.
I just, I just want to add and give credit to Keep Brownsville Beautiful. I know that every springtime, I have a graffiti cleanup. I put in the supplies, but you all do the labor, which is the, like, most expensive part, right? And every year, we've done it for about five consecutive, maybe six years now. And every year that we go out, there's less and less and less. So I just hope that you all can understand that the work you put in today is the fruits of tomorrow. of tomorrow. Every little thing that you all participate in impacts the future in how you shape this city to be more beautiful, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Item five.
Next, we have consent agenda items A through C.
Would you approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item six.
Public hearings. Public hearing number six. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-Roe51-S to allow a duplex of dwelling D use in professional office G, 1CG for lot 3, block 45, original town site located near the corner of Palm Boulevard and East Levy Street.
Good evening, Honorable Pro Tem and City Commissioners. The first case tonight is 0.1377 of an acre. They are applying for a specific use permit for a duplex. This is along East Levy. Here's the zoning map. Here is the 200-foot radius. There were 26 mailouts and zero written opposition. Here is the site plan for the duplex. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports a specific use permit to allow a duplex in professional office G, 1CG, with the condition that the property must comply with all city codes and regulation as determined through the site plan review process.
This is a public comment item. Are there any public comments?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have public hearing number seven. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-Roe57 to rezone from dwelling A DA to apartment H AH for lot 24, block 2, Alamo Heights subdivision located at 6185 Bowie Drive.
This property is 0.1566 of an acre. It is currently zoned dwelling A, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supported rezoning into dwelling G, not to apartment H. The reason for that is the different requirements in order to meet the apartment standards. The applicant would like it to be a duplex instead, which dwelling G would allow. So this property is 0.1566 of an acre. It is along Bowie Drive. As you can see, it's near East 14th Street, which has several commercial businesses, and it's also at the edge of a single-family subdivision. Directly abutting it is dwelling G, which is what the applicant is asking for, and it is a duplex. Here's the zoning map, where you can see that. There were 25 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports staff's recommendation to rezone from dwelling A to dwelling G.
This is a public comment item.
Would you close public hearing?
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Would you approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item, next item.
Next, we have public hearing number eight. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-Roe58 to rezone from dwelling Z, DZ, to general retail F, 4CF, for a 2.011 acre tract out of a 30.223 acre tract out of a 568.836 acre tract in Share 14 Espirito Santo Grand located near the corner of FM 1732 and Summer Hill Boulevard.
This item and the next item are for the same area. The landowner is looking to develop 123 lots, single-family subdivision, as well as this corner being for retail use. This is fronting FM 1732 in all directions. There's undeveloped land and single-family dwellings. Here's the zoning map. As you can see, all of the area that is within side-city limits is going to be zoned dwelling, as well as the developed subdivision to the east is going to be dwelling F. There were six mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling Z, DZ, to general retail F, 4CF.
This is a public comment item. Are there any comments?
Would you close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Would you approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item nine.
Public hearing number nine. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-Roe59 to rezone from dwelling Z, DZ, to dwelling F, DF, for a 28.212 acre tract out of a 30.223 acre tract out of a 568.836 acre tract in Share 14 Espirito Santo Grand located near the corner of FM 1732 and Summer Hill Boulevard.
So this property is directly to the south of the previous case. Again, they are looking to do a single-family subdivision in all directions. There's undeveloped land and single-family dwelling. They are asking for dwelling F, which does match the existing subdivision to the east. There were six mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling Z to dwelling F.
This is a public comment item. Are there any public comments?
Would you close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you approve the item?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 10.
Public hearing number 10. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-Roe60 to rezone from dwelling A DA to general retail H, 4CH for lot 7, block B, a re-subdivision of Ebony Acres subdivision located at 1733 Boca Chica Boulevard.
This property is just under half an acre. It does front on Boca Chica, near the intersection of Palm. To the north, well, in all directions, there's going to be single-family dwellings, and there's going to be commercial businesses along Boca Chica and Palm. Here is the zoning map. As you can see, the rest of the properties on this side of Boca Chica are already zoned general retail, fourth commercial. They would match its neighbors. There were 20 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling A, DA, to general retail H, 4CH.
This is a public comment item. Are there any public comments?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11.
Public hearing number 11. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-Roe61 to rezone from dwelling A DA to dwelling E DE for the west half of lot 3, block 326, La Entrada subdivision, in addition to the city of Brownsville located at 924 D Street.
This property is 0.0689 of an acre. It is in a single-family subdivision off D Street. Here you can see the zoning map of the area. This neighborhood is mostly zoned dwelling. There were 36 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling A, DA, to dwelling E, DE.
This, I'm sorry, this is a public comment item. Are there any public comments?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 12.
Public hearing number 12. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-Roe62 to rezone from dwelling A DA to apartment A AA for 0.52 acres in block 43, El Jardín subdivision, Share 27 Espirito Santo Grand located at 410 North Central Avenue.
This property is just over half an acre at the intersection of North Central and Bowie. They are asking for apartments, apartment A. In all directions, there's going to be single-family dwellings, as well as some other residential uses, and some commercial businesses up along North Central Avenue. Here's the zoning map. There were 15 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling A, DA, to apartment A, AA.
This is a public comment hearing. Are there any public comments?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 13.
Public hearing number 13. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-Roe63 to rezone from dwelling A DA to dwelling G, DG, for lot 13, block 15, Ebony Heights Edition located at 1663 Yale Avenue.
This property is 0.1377 of an acre. It's currently zoned dwelling A, and they're asking it to be changed to dwelling G in order to reduce the setbacks. In all directions, there's going to be single-family dwellings, as well as some commercial businesses to the north. Here's the zoning map. There were 35 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling A, DA, to dwelling G, DG.
Item, this is a public.
Hold on a second. Did y'all recommend it on this?
Yes.
This is the one on Yale?
Yes.
This is a public comment hearing. Are there any public comments?
Would you close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm voting aye on that one.
I think we may be confusing the item. The reduced back one wasn't put on here. This is a different address. Correct, correct. Yeah, that one didn't make it, but it is on the same street, though.
Item 14.
Public hearing number 14. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-910 to rezone from dwelling Z, DZ, to dwelling Z, DZ-CO for Rio Bravo Section 10 located near Mississippi River Boulevard.
This is a city-initiated case to add a conditional overlay to change the setbacks for the subdivision. It would be 20 for the front and 5 for the sides and the rear. There is undeveloped land in all directions. This is river bend, so there are single-family dwellings throughout it as well.
Motion to close public hearing?
I thought she, I didn't think she was done. Were you done with that, Adam?
It's consistent, and P&amp;Z supports it.
Now you're done. Public comment, any public comment?
Motion to close public hearing?
And second. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 15, public comment.
Next, we have the public comment period. I did have one person sign up, Ms. Rose Timmer, but.
She's not here.
I don't see her here in the audience anymore.
She's tired after Tessa left.
Item 16.
Next, we have items for individual consideration. Action item number 16, consideration in action to appoint two members to the Building and Standards Commission.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. The Building and Standards Commission requires five regular members and two alternate members. They cannot be city employees, and they should be qualified in one or more of the fields listed, fire prevention, building construction, sanitation, banking, engineering, health, or public safety. And we have five applicants. So our current members are Rueda Los Santos, Julianna Lopez, and Fabriel Cisneros. We have two vacancies. Our applicants are listed on the right, Juliana Sosa, Jaime Ibarra, Carlos Martinez, Ola Gonzalez, and David Diaz. So we need two positions today.
I'll nominate Jaime Ibarra.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll nominate Juliana Sosa.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have action item number 17, consideration action to appoint one member to the Brownsville Beautification Committee.
We have two vacancies, and there's one applicant, Laura Dominguez. So she is the only eligible applicant.
I'll nominate Laura Dominguez.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have action item number 18, consideration action to appoint one member and one city staff member to the Main Street Advisory Board.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and City Commissioner. We are asking for the appointment of one member of the community and one city staff member to the Main Street Advisory Board. The community, the community members appointed to the board must be a downtown property or business owner, a supporter of downtown redevelopment, or have a background in economic development or historic preservation. The city employees appointed to the board must be from the Planning and Development Services Department and the Office of Grant Management and Community Development. We received nine applications for one available board position. At this time, we ask that you appoint one member from the applicant list that's located on the right-hand column.
I'd move to appoint Mr. Luis Monserrado.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And to fill the employee vacancy for the Office of Grant Management and Community Development, we recommend Efren Trujillo. We recommend Mr. Trujillo.
Okay. So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have action item number 19, consideration in action to adopt resolution number 2019-002, reviewing, amending, and re-adopting all of the provisions listed in the documents titled City of Brownsville, Texas amended investment policy and City of Brownsville, Texas amended investment strategy statement.
You had to wait till the very end, Lupe, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I'll be brief on this. Under the Texas Government Code, Chapter 2256, Public Funds Investment Act, the government, states that the government body of an investment entity shall review its investment policy, investment strategy not less than annually. The government body shall adopt their instrument by, by order or resolution stating that it has reviewed the investment policy and the investment strategy, and the written instrument so adopted shall be recorded. Any changes made to either the investment policy or the investment strategy. First time we adopted this policy was in 1996. This is a housekeeping item. Our policy states that we must revisit this policy annually, make amendments where they are needed. City Investment Committee has reviewed the investment strategy and investment policy and strategy. We're updating the names of the funds that are covered by the investment policy. The city's investment strategy policy is very conservative. The city does not invest its idle cash in risky investments. Our investment policy, primary objective is for preservation of capital, safety of city funds, maintenance of sufficient liquidity, maximization of returns within acceptable risk constraints, and diversification of investments. Tonight, city staff is recommending that the city commission approve resolution 2019-002 as required by the city investment strategy.
Follow.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you turn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.